Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Policy Committee Meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board. Today is Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. Just a reminder that we are live streaming on the Board's YouTube website. Before we get started in tonight's prayer, just a gentle reminder that to please ensure that all your mics are off at all times, unless you have the floor or are speaking. Also, if you could ensure that your cameras are off so that the speaker can take the lead in the frame. And I would like to call upon Trustee Murphy to lead us in our opening prayer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll be saying the Peace Prayer of St. Francis, which was distributed earlier. I look forward to a choir of your lovely voices joining me. Start with the sign of faith and the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there's hatred, let me sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there's doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to understand, sorry, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in the giving that we receive, it is in the pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in the dying that we are born to eternal life. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. We'll move on to item 2.1, Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Marvin.
Seconded by?
Carabella.
Trustee Carabella. Anybody opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on to item 2.2, Approval of Minutes of the May 12, 2020 Meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Trustee O'Brien?
No.
You have a question? No, I understand.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Baloff. Superintendent Baloff, I have one question regarding the minutes. Regarding motion that we passed last policy meeting on hiring and promotion. I'm looking for it. You might find it for me.
It's item 4.4, no, sorry, 4.2.
4.2, and it reads, "It was determined that the policy and corresponding procedure be returned to a policy committee meeting in the fall." I said one question to Superintendent Baloff. I thought we had said October, but I could be wrong. Can you verify that?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I did take a look at the minutes, and my understanding is that Trustee Antumasi's motion was to defer, and that it was added to the minutes to a meeting in the fall based on that conversation. And the month of October wasn't mentioned until after the vote, after the vote had carried. So I did know in my notes, as I communicated with you, that we had talked about October. However, that motion, it came after the motion to defer. So the motion was to defer it, and that's what was captured in the minutes. And it was after that time that discussion ensued, and it landed on in the fall. And I think there was some confusion as well at that time because we were talking about the first meeting in the fall being in October when we in fact have a meeting in September.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Does that satisfy your question, Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, it did, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And I just have an item under 4.3. It says there was no discussion. Actually, there was, this is policy I-42 out of province travel. There was a lengthy discussion that was ensued and recommended changes. So I just think it needs to be noted that there was, that discussion was ensued.
Sorry, Nancy, for?
4.3, out of province travel, staff travel. There was a lengthy discussion that was ensued?
Okay, I'll check the recording, and I will adjust.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I did raise my hand, just as, if that's possible. So at the actual policy meeting, we didn't have any discussion. It was at the subsequent board meeting when the discussion ensued. Is my recollection of that. And I can have Janine verify. You're muted, and it?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, can we verify? I recollect it was at the policy meeting, but I could be wrong.
Okay, thank you.
So can I hand up, sorry, my apologies.
Trustee Antumasi, you could put it in the chat. I have somebody else who's ahead of you, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. It's regarding 5.1. If we could look at that, and I just wanted to make it clear, you mentioned, because I brought it up there too, I asked that what we're actually being a part of is a staff working committee. And I think it said we're striking a working committee, but in the end, you clarified when I asked, and you clarified that it was the staff working committee.
So it was a working committee that would be established as per the bylaws, that Director Daley, and it says it would be done in the fall, is my understanding, in September.
That's right, as a part, okay.
It was unanimously carried, but we?
I agree, I agree.
Back and take a look. It's indicated for striking a working committee. So we can go back and take a look, but I believe whether that was said before we went around the table or if it was after.
Okay, but was, okay, but the point was to clarify that it was a staff working committee because we have no, like, working committee in our bylaws. That's all I'll say, thank you.
Trustee Antumasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, agenda item 4, we're going back to the minutes 4.3. I voted against that particular item. Out of province travel.
Thank you, we will confirm. And so can I get a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll move it.
Trustee Antumasi?
And I will?
Trustee O'Brien. Thank you. Moving on to item 3, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? There being none, we'll move on to item 4.1, Action Items. A policy I-06, Delegations to the Board. I will read the motion, and I would ask that somebody move it.
I can move it.
Sorry, just one second. Janine, is it possible for you to move down to item 4.1, please? Thank you. So can I get a mover that the Policy Committee recommend that policy I-06, delegation to the board be forwarded along with amendments to the June 16th, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? I believe Trustee Antumasi, you moved it, seconded by Trustee Agnew. And Director Daley, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. The only change that was made in this policy at this point was a link or reference to the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. We felt that no other changes would be recommended at this time in view of the current review of our board bylaws and possible consideration that content might be changed at a later date. So the slightly revised policy is attached for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Daley. Is there any questions? Okay, there being none, no questions, I will move to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor?
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Caratow?
Favor.
Is Trustee Bumbra on? I didn't see if she joined.
I don't think she is.
I don't think so either, okay, thank you. Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
The policy will be brought to the next board meeting, thank you. Moving on to item 4.2, Policy I-28, Electronic Meetings. Can I have somebody please move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy I-28 electronic meetings be forwarded along with amendments to the June 16th, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Agnew, seconded by?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, and Director Daley. I will pass it off to you for information.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Again, not any major changes to this policy. We did make a change from pupil representative and replaced it with student trustee, to be more accurate reflection. We've also attached as an appendix an email that we received from the ministry regarding amendments to the Ed Act and electronic meetings in light of the school closure situation that we're in right now. And the revised policy is attached for review, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Daley. Is there any questions for Director Daley? Seeing as there are none, I will take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
The policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Moving on to action item 4.3, Policy I-26, Student Trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board. Can I get somebody to move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy I-26, Student Trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board be forwarded to the June 19th, 2020 board meeting for approval, to be forwarded for stakeholder feedback, to be reviewed at the September 8th, 2020 Policy Committee meeting?
I'll move it, Madam Chair.
Trustee Murphy, seconded by?
Trustee Antumasi.
Trustee Antumasi. And I will hand this over to Trustee Murphy and Trustee Caratow. Who would like to speak first?
I can speak first, Madam Chair. So in this situation, I feel like the guy that holds Elvis's cane and his cape before he goes onstage. So I don't want to go up there and try and play the banjo for Elvis. So I'll let Trustee Caratow speak for the majority. Basically, I just want to say that this is something that engages our student body more, is something that is approved or desirable by the trustees, sorry, the school trustees. So it's something that I'm in favor of and definitely want to support, but I'll let Trustee Caratow take it from here.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy, Trustee Caratow. Would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, miss?
Sorry, would you like to speak to your motion, to the policy, to your changes? And then we've got some, I believe we've got Superintendent McGilliguddy, who would also like to have the floor when you're done.
All right, of course. Thank you, Madam Chair, for acknowledging me. And I know trustees have heard me talk about this topic at length before, and I won't chew your ear off this time because it really boils down to one problem with our current structure and an easily identified solution. In a country such as ours where democracy and responsible government is the basis for all the functionings of the state, it's believed by us all that the people should have some measure of control over or a voice in the government that affects them. For students like me, there's no level or part of government that affects them quite as much as the school board. And that's where the problem comes in. Because there exists a representative, the student trustee, that voices students' concerns before this very school board. But while they represent the tens of thousands of HCSB students, they're elected by only a few dozen student senators. The great majority of students for whom I'm meant to speak for, they don't know who I am, and they didn't put me here. But there's an easy solution, to democratize the process for electing student trustees, and to allow the students to select their own representative. This solution will allow every student, every secondary and grade eight student in this board, not just an elite select few, to make their unique voices heard in a democratic election. It'll engage students across this board and get them more intimately involved in the workings of how our board functions. And it'll prepare students for civic participation throughout their lifetimes and help educate them in the general processes of government, an essential skill. That's the essence of the amendments I'm proposing, to bring democracy to the students, a voice to the voiceless, to empower students with the dignity that they deserve as educated citizens and have an impact on how this board is run. The details may be notable and have to be sorted out later, but they can be handled. What's more important is the principle. That is the principle of these amendments, and it's one I hope that this board will all stand behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Caratow. It's always, it's always interesting listening to you speak. I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent McGilliguddy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have some considerations regarding the proposed changes. As the proposed changes did not come through the usual policy review process, which is to say it's off the regularly scheduled cycle, and it wasn't submitted by a staff group, and it first appeared before the Policy Committee in its present form as a discussion item, I would like to offer the following observations and recommendations. Recognizing the desire to increase the franchise where student trustees' elections are concerned, I reached out to our co-terminist partners at Halton District to inquire about their electoral system and the process through which they implemented it. And they just completed their second year using this system. The process took them over a year to implement and required the services of web-based developers in their IT department to write the necessary code. Our current regional allotment of student trustees poses an additional complexity that the HDSB does not face in writing their program because they neglect only two student trustees regardless of region. The top two voting, vote-winning candidates from those running system-wide earn the two available seats. Our ballots will have to feature three separate sets of candidates to meet the requirement that one student trustee be elected from each of Burlington, Milton, Halton Hills, and Oakville. Their system does not utilize instant runoff voting. It's a straight first past the post. And while they include grade eights in their electoral process, this is a reflection of their already existing elementary student senate. In order to end up where I understand the proposed policy changes intend, I propose the following process. First of all, the establishment of a web-based developer code, either by in-house IT staff with such capabilities or via the services of a vendor. First, to widen the franchise from the current electoral system of 50 to 70 student senators to the approximately 12,000 secondary students featuring a ballot with the necessary regional representation, but initially retaining a first past the post electoral count. Based upon the HDSB experience, such a system could be devised, tested, and ready for utilization for the 2022, 2023 student trustee election that would take place in February of 2022. Once this code has been used successfully, additional complications could then be added in sequence, perhaps first by revising the electoral counting, the electoral's counting system to instant runoff voting, which requires considerably more complex ballot and supporting algorithms. Once this revised code has been used successfully, the final step of adding grade eights to the process could be implemented. And the reason I'm leaving this one to the end is because it requires building system-wide capacity in more than 45 additional buildings, while the first two phases can be accomplished centrally. Trustees will understand that such an undertaking will take significant time and resources, either in terms of the usage of staff or for a budget if we have to go to an outside vendor. And a final note, staff are not in support of the revision of the requirement that candidates for student trustee must receive an endorsement from their parish priest as it is inconsistent with the work of many years building and sustaining the homeschool parish triad. Superintendent Nar also has concerns about including school chaplaincy leaders or the system chaplain in the candidate endorsement process, something she can speak to with more familiarity as they fall under her portfolio of responsibilities. So the point I'm trying to make there is that we, we as a staff would wish to retain the requirement that a candidate be endorsed by their parish priest. I hope that my observations are helpful to trustees and your deliberations, and I welcome any questions that may have arisen, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent McGilliguddy. So we have a couple of ways we can deal with this. You've raised a couple of comments and concerns. I know I myself will have some questions in it, but we do have a list of trustees who have some questions. So I think what we'll do is, is we'll go through the roster of trustees. Should they have questions for you directly, you can respond. Should they have questions for either Trustee Murphy or Trustee Caratow, they can respond. And then we can look at proposed changes, should there be any, or consensus for proposed changes. So I'm now going to hand it over to Trustee Agnew.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So one of the questions that I do have, and I wanted to say, Trustee Caratow, you know, excellent work on this. I know that you've worked diligently with Trustee Murphy and received input from various stakeholders. And so, you know, I just want to commend you on the work you've done on this. I know that you've worked very hard. I just had one question, and it's unrelated probably to anything that's been mentioned so far, but I'm wondering if there's a possible way for us to take a look at ensuring that we have a seat or we have representation from someone from our spec ed community? And that's not to say that, you know, we wouldn't have a spec ed student that would run and receive that vote, and I don't want anyone to get a free pass. But I do worry about making sure that, you know, that voice is being heard. And I'm not sure how that is, how we confirm that that's happening right now. But I would like to give some consideration to possibly having a seat held in some fashion that would be specifically allocated to an identified student or a student from the spec ed system. And would welcome your thoughts, you know, Trustee Caratow, or any of the thoughts from my fellow trustees on that.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you, Trustee Agnew. So we'll start with Trustee Caratow in regards to your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One facet of a completely democratic election that I liked in particular, and it's a concern that some students have raised to me, is that it allows everybody to vote. Becoming a student senator is currently the prerequisite for voting for student trustee in our board, and it is restrictive to many students who have special needs, for instance. When this franchise is extended to everybody, it ensures that everybody has a voice, even those in special education who may find barriers to joining student senate to applying through our current system. This will ease those barriers and allow every single student in our board to have a vote. As for a specific seat for a spec ed student before this board, I'm sure that's something that could also be considered by trustees at any point in time, but it's just something I haven't considered, but I thank you for bringing it up. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would you like, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So I would like, so thank you, Trustee Caratow. And I agree that, you know, it's a democratic process, everyone has an opportunity to vote. And I'm certainly not trying to insinuate that we give any type of preferential treatment. But, you know, I do know that for some of our, for some of our spec ed students, you know, the idea of perhaps running in an election like this or, you know, putting their name forward may be a little overwhelming, it might be a little bit much. And I really would like to see if there's a way for us, as we're reviewing this policy, to make some sort of allocation to ensure that we do have a spot that has been assigned or allocated that would specifically need to be filled by a student with identifications in our system. So I would like to see if there's, and I don't know the wording or where we could put that, but, you know, if my fellow trustees felt that they were in agreement with that, I would like to see it, I think it'd be a great move forward to ensure that those students are sitting at the table and have that voice that they may not otherwise feel comfortable doing.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. So we'll make note about exploring to see if trustees are in agreement to adding a spot and how it would look like for a student with special needs. I'm going to move it on to Trustee Duarte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, thank you. I like Trustee Agnew's idea, but I think it's a little bit too early to discuss. We need to talk a little more about it. But to me, Madam Chair, this student trustee position is a very responsible position. And to me, it's not a popular position, it's a very responsible position. So I'd like to, I have a couple of questions, and I have a follow-up question too. I'll keep it very short. My question is to, thanks, thank you to Superintendent McGilliguddy to clarify, clarifying that this policy has not been reviewed by the Policy Review Committee. And it's a good thing that you said that, because I thought it was reviewed. But Superintendent McGilliguddy, would you be able to explain how the school council is elected for the benefit of all trustees, how school council is elected, how the student senate is elected? How student trustees are elected? And to tie it all together and explain how the student voice is represented directly or indirectly through the student trustees? And is this a truly democratic process? So I'm trying to tie the link from school council to a student senate to a student trustee. And I wanted to know, this process has been around for a long time. So is the student voice really represented? And is this a truly democratic process that we have? I have a follow-up question after that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you through you. Thank you, trustee Duarte. Just to clarify, superintendent McGill-Cutty made a comment that it didn't go through the normal process. It didn't per se because it was brought forward by trustee Caratow and trustee Murphy. However, superintendent McGill-Cutty was made aware of the item and the proposed changes that were requested prior to it being placed on the agenda. So just for clarification. But superintendent McGill-Cutty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess what I meant by that comment about the usual process is that these, these proposed changes did not come from the staff part of the Policy Review Committee. So trust, through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Duarte, I'm going to infer that you actually mean to be asking me about student council election as opposed to school council elections? Because, yes, thank you. So student council elections are conducted in each of our individual secondary day schools, and they are actual electoral processes, not only for, for instance, the president, the vice president, the treasurer. There are usually also grade representatives. So there'd be, typically, there would be two, in most schools, two grade representatives. So two grade nines, two grade tens, two grade elevens, two grade twelves, and then other at-large members. But there certainly are a large number of members of student councils in each of our individual schools who are directly elected by students in those buildings. Student senate is a bit of a different form of representation in that it's a process whereby students apply to become members of student senate, and they would need to have the endorsement of teachers in their school and, for instance, the school administration in order to submit their application to the student senate itself, where the student trustees and the staff advisors look at the applications and make selections based on that. Typically, or very often, student senators are already heavily engaged in student leadership in their schools, either because they are members of the student council itself or because they are members of the student athletic council or other kinds of representative groups within the school building. And then I think the next question you were asking about is how is it that student trustees are currently elected? Student trustees are currently elected by the student senate. There are a number of student senators from each secondary school. And the way that the process currently works is each secondary school is asked to provide a candidate for the student trustee elections, and that person has to have the endorsement of their principal and of their parish priest, and there are other requirements as are outlined in the policy itself. They attend a meeting in February where they give a short speech to the senators who were gathered at that meeting. They are given an opportunity to answer questions of the senators who are present. And then the balloting is conducted that evening on paper by issuing the number of candidates by region on the paper ballot. And then, then, then student senators have their, have their votes, and they are tallied. Now, this year, for the first time, we went from a straight first past the post electoral process to, I think it was called ranked balloting. Certainly had a lot of assistance from Sonya Ellison, who's our vice principal, who's our staff representative, who's in charge of student senate because her math skills are considerably better than mine. But it isn't a simple tally of votes. It involves each person ranking the three, each of the three regional candidates gets a ranking of first, second, or third. And then the tallying involves an initial tally to see if there's, to drop out the first candidate, and then a second tally to see the head-to-head competition of the remaining candidate. So it's a little bit more involved than we were used to in the past, but we felt it was conducted successfully, and it resulted in our slate of student trustees who will be sitting with us come September for the 2021-2022 school year. That's what I can remember about what you asked. I hope I've given you a full answer. I'm more than happy to, to, to deal with follow-ups.
Madam, Madam Chair, part of the same question, and it's a continuation of the same question.
So this is your follow-up question?
No, no, Madam Chair, this is a continuation of the same question. The part of it was not answered.
Okay, well, trustee Duarte, because we do have like five other trustees in line, so I would ask that you do the second part and you can come back in the loop, okay?
So, okay, this is part of my first question, Madam Chair, which was not answered. So I have a follow-up after that. So what, how do you rule?
I would ask that, as you had multiple questions, first round, that if this is a clarification or a follow-up, that we go to the next trustees and then we'll come circle back to you.
This is, this is a continuation of the first question itself, so I'll ask the question now.
Well, ask the question, then we'll determine from there. How does that sound?
Okay, so, so superintendent McGill-Cutty, I ask this thing. So in this process that you explained right now, do you think that it's a truly democratic process and is student voice represented directly or indirectly in the process that you just explained? That was part of the first question.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. And I apologize to trustee Duarte that I didn't remember that part of it. There were a lot of moving parts, so with your indulgence. And this, I suppose, in this case, you are asking me for an opinion rather than an objective assessment because I'm not entirely sure how that would be conducted. I believe it is, it is representative of student voice in the, in the same sense that we have representative democracy in our political systems where individuals make decisions on our behalf. We do have a, we do have a, a full franchise in, in Canadian electoral processes for those who are 18 years and older. Some people would question whether or not that constitutes a complete franchise. So I guess, I'm struggling a little bit to answer your question because it's an opinion question. I feel like the process we have in place has served us well. I don't, however, I don't, however, say that to mean that it could not be improved.
Madam Chair, now my follow-up question. Would you like me to go in the queue?
Go ahead, trustee Duarte.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So superintendent McGill-Cutty answered part of the question. My follow-up question was, can the present system, can the present process, can that be improved? And tweaked a little bit because this process has been around for a long time. Do you think it can be improved, superintendent McGill-Cutty? And do you suggest any improvements?
That's a question I hadn't turned my mind to. It's the first time I'm, I'm being asked to consider what other kinds of improvements could be made other than the ones that are proposed by the student trustee. I suppose the number of senators could be larger. I suppose we could have an elementary senate. And those would be my initial comments in response to that question, which, which I, which I haven't had a lot of time to think about.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Duarte and superintendent McGill-Cutty. Moving on to trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, as I hear everyone speak, I can't help thinking, first, one comment, one comment that I'd like to bring up. I think trustee Caratow did a, did a good job in researching his topic and advocating for, for what he's trying to achieve here. But he did make a comment in, in the conclusion of his presentation that he's trying to advance a principle, and then we could figure out what to replace it with. I personally would not, would not subscribe to that approach because this is a system that has been around a long time. It's not to deny the fact that it can't, there can't be improvements be brought out to it. But I'd like to remind everybody that we have a parliamentary system at the, at the national level that is constantly questioning whether it should be first, best, past the post or, or the writing system that we have now. And democracy is, is, is always a very laudable, laudable objective, and we should try, we, we should strive to get as close as possible to represent everybody's voice all the time. But there are, there are limitations, like in our country, where you have small regions.
Trustee DeRosa, you seem to have been muted. Is there a question that you have?
I do have a question, but I'm leading long to it. So if you will allow me just to very quickly conclude my comment and my reticence in, in, in moving forward with this thing is essentially, I need an opportunity to hear what the solution and what we intend to replace it with. And I want everyone around the table to recognize that 100% democracy is a laudable objective that we should strive for, but it's not achieved. Our national parliamentary system is a perfect example of that, and it's done. It's a hybrid in the interest of giving the regions and the areas with less population an equal voice. So I am very reluctant in moving forward until I see.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Did you have a question?
No, I'm done, thank you.
So it's just a comment, okay. Thank you, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank trustee Caratow for such a comprehensive presentation. I've learned more about student elections in the last week than I have ever. I have two questions for superintendent McGill-Cutty. The first question, superintendent McGill-Cutty, is the nominees that stand before the senate for, for student trustee, the people that actually stand before them, are they elected by the student council? That's my first question. And my second question, I was trying to get everything you said about your suggestion. Are you suggesting an elected senate?
Thank you, trustee O'Brien, to you, superintendent McGill-Cutty.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. I'm going to deal with the second question first. And that is that my proposal did not require that the senate be elected. That was not something that I had indicated. And then to your first question regarding the candidates for student trustee, this would, this typically depends on whether or not there's more than one candidate from an individual school. And in my experience, both as a principal and in this role now, I've had a student senate under my portfolio of responsibilities for the better part of four or five years now. I have not yet encountered a situation where there was more than one candidate coming forward from a school. In fact, we've recently been having more and more difficulty getting any candidates from some schools. But in a situation where there was more than one, it was my understanding the principal would be looking to poll their student council if there was a competition for endorsement of a candidate for student trustee from their school.
Thank you, superintendent McGill-Cutty.
Do you have a follow-up question, trustee O'Brien?
Not at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to trustee Intomasi.
Through you, Madam Chair, to superintendent McGill-Cutty. Have we costed what ruling out the new format would cost with, as they've ruled it out at the co-terminus board? Is there a cost attached to it?
Superintendent McGill-Cutty?
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. There would be a cost. We haven't yet endeavored to ascertain what that cost would be. It would either mean that existing IT personnel who had the capacity to act as web-based developers would have to spend their time working on the code to make this work. Because, of course, you would have to provide every secondary school student with a unique ID in order to enter their ballot so as to ensure that there weren't any shenanigans where a balloting was concerned or voting was concerned. So we would either have to have in-house staff in the IT department who have well, web-based developer skills use their time to create such a, such a, a program. Or you would need to acquire the services of a third-party vendor to provide that capacity. And I suppose depending on the expense, which I frankly don't have any idea at this point, although I could investigate, could, of course, trigger the requirement for an RFP because depending on the cost.
Follow-up through you, Madam Chair. So it would seem to me, because this is a continuing, it happens every year, we may have to include a new person or create a new position to facilitate an ongoing development of this type of voting and this type of procedure. Would that be correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, if I may. I'm not sure how much time would be required. I do know that the public board, that their process took them the better part of a calendar year in order to create the code. They have offered us the use of their code as a point of departure, but even then, you would still need our own staff to work on that because we do have other complexities, as I mentioned in my comments, that the, the public board does not have in terms of our regional candidates. And certainly, if it was the will of the trustees that not only were we to conduct this larger franchise, but that we were to do so with the form of voting proposed, that is again another layer of complexity. But I don't, I don't have the necessary background in the, in that department. That's a question that probably could be better answered by superintendent Lofts because the IT department is under his portfolio of responsibilities. And I'm not, I'm not sure what kind of requirements this project would, would, would call.
Superintendent Lofts, not to put you on the spot, but I'm assuming you wouldn't have an answer for something like that on the spot.
Through you, Madam Chair, I do not have an answer for that, no, right now. I have heard, though, from my senior manager of IT that we'd actually probably have to outsource this, this endeavor as well. So he just let me know right now that we would have to do it just because of the nature of the voting and such, that we would outsource this if it came to fruition.
Thank you, superintendent Lofts. I'm going to move on to trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, I have a comment and then a question. So I guess my comment would be, I guess, I think referring back to trustee Agnew's point in terms of trying to involve a spec ed student. I was thinking about involving in some way, including a role in SEAC. Maybe that could be something that would be implemented. And then my question is actually to trustee Caratow because in the policy, it does say a letter of endorsement from the school student council, and that is implying that the student council would endorse, presumably after electing their candidate to be pushed to the, like, oh, the whole election of student trustees. So my question is, is because what happened our last policy meeting, where you mentioned that the, the process of selecting a candidate is inconsistent. So for instance, only the president is selecting their, their candidate for their school. Can you clarify that, trustee Caratow?
Trustee Caratow?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Swan, for your comment. It's generally left vague there as a letter of endorsement mainly from the school student council presidents, which are sometimes referred to by different names in different school student councils. I believe it would be a prudent amendment to specify that to student council executive or president. Essentially, it would just be a letter recognizing the student for their achievements. They would be vetted by the student council and ensure that they were a competent candidate that ought to be furthered on to the, to the election stage to run for student trustee. I do believe it could be clarified, and I thank you for bringing it up. But I'd just like to readdress that principle that it's there to make sure that the student council has some oversight on who the nominee for student trustee is. And I do appreciate that it ought to be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Caratow. Trustee Swan, do you have a follow-up question?
Not at this moment, thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to trustee Carabella.
Thank you, thank you through you, Madam Chair. So thank you for the report. It's always good to put forward ideas and increase everyone's understanding of the process. I do see, though, I, I really appreciate. I do see though, I really appreciate Superintendent McGilliguddy's overview. I do see that students have an opportunity to elect their fellow students to the student council and represent their voice. And then that student council can approach student trustees with issues and the voice of who they're representing. So I do see some elections going on and some representation. And you know, this system has evolved the way it is for a reason. Then I echo the need to keep the letter from the parish priest. I think it's very important for any leadership position in our Catholic schools to have a letter from their Catholic parish priest. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Carabella. Director Daley, the floor is yours.
You and through you, Madam Chair. I think I put my hand up when Trustee Duarte asked, you know, is there ways we could tweak the system or are there changes that we could make? I think one of those was the electoral system we implemented in student senate this year with that Superintendent McGilliguddy referred to. So that's one change that's been made. And I guess the only other thing I wanted to say at this point was a comment. So I've been back to the board for a couple of years now. And I spent my entire teaching and administrative career in the secondary panel. And when I was the superintendent in Brandhalde in Norfolk, I had the high schools were my family of schools. And I did work with our student senate and then more directly with our student trustee. My experience has been our current way of selecting trustees has produced outstanding student trustees, including the current three and certainly the trustees that we had last year. So whatever changes we might want to make, I think our current process is serving us very well.
Thank you, Director Daley. So I will allow one more round of questions and clarifications. And then we'll start to look at the proposed changes or if there's any recommendations. And then we'll take it to a vote. Actually, we'll end with Trustee Caratow and Trustee Murphy with final comments. But we've got Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think there were a few people before me. I'm giving them the last chance. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Once again, I really appreciate the work done by Trustee Caratow. Let me turn my camera. Yes, Trustee Caratow's amazing work that you have done. I have just one, actually two quick questions for you. I read your report in detail. And the way I look at it is the largest school, the school with the largest student population will always have a representative. Because you are voting, the largest population would obviously vote for their student trustee. Whereas smaller schools like Georgetown, high schools, they will never ever have a representative as a student trustee in the present system that is being proposed. So that brings up some kind of inequity in the system. So that was my comment. So my real question here is, you mentioned that grade eights are now being eligible to vote. I have a child in grade eight, and I have no idea how he's ever going to think of voting for a student trustee, who he doesn't have any idea. So how are we planning to get this working? Getting grade eights in all the schools across, knowing their student trustee, who's running for student trustee, knowing what they stand for, knowing their educational, their academics, how good their academic sports, parish, all around in the community? How do we plan to get this information out to grade eights so that they show interest in voting? Thank you, Madam Chair.
So thank you, Trustee Duarte. Was there an actual question there?
Yes, the question was actually grade eights. How do we intend to make them interested in finding out who the student trustee is going to run? If at all, we implement a system. And we want the grade eights to start voting for the student trustee. How do we plan to ensure the students in grade eight are educated enough to know the student trustee's involvement in parish, community, in the school, what they stand for? Because to my knowledge, grades are least bothered and didn't care about anything because I have a child in grade eight. So how do we plan to roll this out? And how do you plan to implement it in elementary school, sorry?
Madam Chair, could I jump in and answer that one?
I was going to say it's either Trustee Murphy or Trustee Caratow. Absolutely.
I'll jump in. Well, basically, to me, the way to engage somebody's interest is to ask them. So right now, we're not asking them. They're not involved with the process. So it's natural that they wouldn't have any interest in something that they're not engaged with. So once they are engaged and they have a voice and responsibility, then it's like any electoral process, it's up to the candidates to engage and to promote themselves. You know, this is the democratic process. So the same thing can be said for ourselves. What faith do we have in the electorate to understand what we stand for in the issues versus a name they see in a ballot? Well, that's the responsibility of the voter to educate and engage themselves. If they choose not to exercise their democratic right, then they get the result they get. So I think by simply due to the fact that we're engaging them and asking them, that there's going to be a certain interest level. What is the percentage of student body that will want to vote? I don't know. And that's really something we can't control. If people choose not to exercise their democratic right, and if they don't want to, then that's really on them. It's not on the system itself. So I think that addresses your point. And then, Madam Chair, I'll wait to sum up some.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, do you actually, you're up next. Do you have something that you want to add? Or are you good to wait to sum up?
I can wait to sum up.
Okay, I'll put you down as the last to speak on it, Trustee Caratow. Do you have a question?
No, I didn't have any questions at this time. I guess just to respond to Trustee Duarte and how he mentioned how the largest school will always have a hegemony, domination over the other schools in a given region. There are some solutions to this that are present in the way the system is and how the improvements that we intend to bring to it. The way the demographics of our schools currently are is that in every triad of schools in Oakville, Burlington, or North Halton, each school is relatively close in population to the others. In Burlington, for instance, it's a near-perfect split. Each school has one-third of the population in Burlington. And this already makes it very difficult for one school to have a domination over the others because, you know, they'll always be outnumbered one to two by the other schools. And that's even assuming that all schools and the students within them vote as a monolith. Students are all unique and have their own different views and opinions. And they wouldn't blindly follow the nominee from their school in most instances. They'd think critically about the candidates and the positions that they hold and the proposals that they have, and they'd make an educated decision or choice. There are of course, some people who will vote just based on the school. But most students are educated electors who will think critically about the ballot that's in front of them and the candidates that are running. Another solution is the instant runoff voting system, which Superintendent McGilliguddy has explained will take time to implement. But when it is implemented, it is a perfected system. Because when it's in place, it will require that 50% plus one of the votes are required to elect a student trustee. Now, there is no secondary school in our board that has 50% plus one of the population of a municipality. That would be pretty poor planning. And I think more of our school planning department than to, you know, draw the borders like that. So there's another solution therein. So even assuming that all the students in one school will vote in the exact same way, that instant runoff voting system helps prevent one school dominating the others by requiring students from each school to cooperate to send one representative up to the board. And there's a further solution in allowing multiple candidates from one school. This will diversify the voice that larger schools have because currently it's anti-meritocratic. By only allowing one representative from a large school like Jean Vanier, you stifle the voices of a lot of other prospective candidates from that school while you disproportionately amplify those from smaller schools. This would make it fairer. If Jean Vanier is maybe like one and a half times the size of Christ the King, then maybe for Christ the King's two candidates for the student trustee election, Jean Vanier would have three. And this would diversify the opinions and make it harder for one school to dominate the entire election. This in conjunction with the instant runoff voting would produce a near-perfect electoral system where no one school would be able to dominate all the other ones. So I guess in conclusion, a combination of an educated electorate, the demographics and composition of our schools, the instant runoff voting system, and the ability to have numerous candidates from one school. When you put these all together, it combines into a perfect electoral system that will eliminate this problem of big school hegemony that so many have identified. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Caratow. So, Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Murphy or Trustee Caratow. Actually, this is related to what you just said, Trustee Caratow. I'm thinking of a school like Assumption with a smaller population, very small population, in a huge geographical area that goes all the way from Hamilton to Oakville. Under the system that you're proposing, where a larger school, say Bishop Reading, could have as many nominees for student trustee as they wanted, would that not take away the chances of a smaller school like Assumption? Thank you.
Trustee Murphy, did you want to address that or Trustee Caratow?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Trustee O'Brien, for your question. It's notable that our board geographically locks candidates for student trustee into three races from North Halton, Burlington, and Oakville. So a student from Assumption would never be running against a student from Bishop Reading because they'd be running to be Burlington student trustee and not North Halton student trustee. Furthermore, in our system currently, we allow students from Oakville or North Halton to vote in the Burlington student trustee election. And this allows for a more independent look at it. It's an outsider looking in. Still all the same board, still a student representative, but those from outside Burlington with less biases or ties to any one secondary school looking and making a more objective evaluation of the candidates that are running in that race. So I understand that Assumption has a large geographic area despite being smaller. But Assumption is only, by the recent projections from the school planning, I believe it's 45 students fewer than Notre Dame and only 60 or so fewer students than Corpus Christi. It's not very geographically disproportionate in terms of population to those other schools. And I don't believe it would be bullied into a minor role in this board, especially considering all the previous examples I gave earlier. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Caratow. Trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm kind of stuck because I understand the recommendation that's been proposed by staff to keep the parish priest letter on here. I think what this amendment actually goes back to is what happened this year, actually. We had two isolated cases. And if Trustee Caratow would, I guess, help me on this as well, that would be great. But we had two isolated cases where in one case, we had a student who whose priest, I think, was new. And so a priest who is new wouldn't be able to, I guess faithfully, provide a parish priest letter to her. And then in the second case, her parish priest just didn't know her at all. So it's hard. I'm having kind of difficulties trying to trying to see whether, having some exceptions with this. For instance, where if an explanation could be provided in terms of why the parish priest's letter was not provided in the candidate's package, I'm not sure. So.
Is that directed, Trustee Swan, is that directed at someone specific? Are you looking for Trustee Caratow?
If Trustee Caratow can just reaffirm that cases, those cases for me, that would be great.
Okay. Trustee Caratow?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Delix, I mean, Trustee Swan, for your comment. That's very true. And the fact that it's happened twice in this year, I'm more familiar with the candidate who is running in North Halton. It shows that it's a problem, a loophole that we should close. That currently under our system, we're preventing those Catholic students in good standing from actually being able to run and be a candidate in our election despite being ostensibly qualified. The fact that we have such a rigid requirement that we need them to get a letter from their parish priest, although admirable because I understand that it's a Catholic board and we're very proud of our Catholicity and we want our student trustees to represent that Catholicity. I just feel that it is unnecessarily restrictive in proving that that student is a Catholic student in good standing. That's why in the policy, as I've proposed it, you would still require active parish membership and regular mass attendance. And I actually go more specific. Not only does it have to be a letter of endorsement from the parish priest or the school assistant chaplain, it'll also have to specifically attest to their parish membership and regular mass attendance. Before, that wasn't required. Your parish priest could write you a letter saying, yes, it's fine for you to run the election, and that's it. This one actually, I feel, is more stringent where it needs to be and more lax where it ought to be. Because we don't want to prevent good Catholic students from standing for election, from making their voice heard in this board. But we also want to make sure that they are those good Catholic students. So I believe that this is a solution that's going to satisfy both ends. To raise up those students of good moral character to be candidates for student trustee while also like not restricting those who may in some technicalities not adhere to the requirements that we currently have. That's all.
Thank you, Trustee Caratow. And I've got two more trustees on, and then I'm going to, and Superintendent McGilliguddy, and I'm going to end the discussion. But we're going to go to Trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two very quick comments. On the issue of enlisting, Trustee Caratow described the possible solutions to equate, to democratize the system is reminding me of the constant discussion that goes on at the national level between the current system we have now versus first past the post. And the objective being the same, to try to equate the system. So if we're anticipating, if we're pushing this project on the basis that it will democratize the process, I think what we'll end up with is another solution comparable to the same solution where total democracy will not be attained. So until we actually see something concrete as to what will replace what we have now, I'm very, very reluctant to move forward on this. With respect to the parish priest, it seems to me that we are dealing with a handful of exceptions, which, you know, the reality of life is that exceptions will always happen. Maybe what we should be considering, rather than rewriting the rule, we should be considering offering these exceptions a second look somewhere else. Maybe an alternative, an appeal process, I don't know. But I certainly wouldn't support changing again the whole system that's worked for so many years for the sake of one or two or three examples, whatever they may be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee DeRosa. We've got Trustee Agnew. I'm going to hand it over to her.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if, you know, there's been a lot of great conversations tonight on both sides. And I think it's been a fantastic conversation with lots of suggestions. I'm wondering if there is possibly an appetite for us to defer this. And I'd be willing to put a motion to defer this to the September policy meeting based on a few different factors. One could be, you know, getting that staff feedback and recommendations. The second one could be taking a look at the costing for this current proposal. And then the ability for us to bring this to CAC to have a conversation around what that representation might look like. So I would be, you know, willing to put a motion on the floor to defer this to that September policy meeting. So just putting it. So, just putting it out there.
I would second that particular suggestion.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Trustee Agnew in regards to, and I think I've got it down here. So the motion is to defer to the September policy meeting in order to receive information and get feedback from staff, to receive costs in regards to the current proposal or proposed changes on the policy, and a referral to CAC regarding the possible development or recommendation of a spec ed liaison or representative. And I believe, Trustee, you seconded that? Trustee Antomasi?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so we've got a seconder. Any, Superintendent McGilliguddy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make the observation that in my experience, none of our parishes have a sole priest who works in that parish on their own. Now, I will admit to not being intimately familiar with the parishes across the entire geography, but certainly never in my experience have I ever been in a parish that had only one priest. So this notion that the one priest who knows you strikes me as a little bit surprising. And again, I'll reiterate that Superintendent Nar, who I know is not present, has serious concerns about asking the school chaplaincy leaders who work under her direction to provide an endorsement in lieu of that endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McGilliguddy, Trustee Caratow. I would ask at this point, though, Trustee Caratow, to stick to something that's new, or questions and comments in regards to the current motion that's on the table.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know Trustee DeRosa has requested a roadmap of how the new system would work. So essentially, a student would apply to be a candidate under roughly the same process as they would now. They would have to ask for support from their principal and their student council, as well as their parish priest or their school chaplain. And then they would be vetted by the board to make sure that they have all of this information. And then the board would compile a list of all of these candidates, and using, you know, the code and the web system that Mr. McGilliguddy has laid out in his road plan, you know, set up all of these different candidates for the election with the voter log that we have. And then in February, an election will be held with all of these candidates, and one of them will be confirmed through the algorithm and all the coding. Now, to address what Trustee Agnew has been saying about deferral, I am not against deferral per se, but I believe that if we do defer this matter to another meeting, I believe we should also seek the stakeholder feedback, especially of the students, and see what they have to say on this matter. Because I believe that they will speak with a very unique grassroots voice, and we should probably hear what the students have to say on this matter before we make any sort of decision, or even to defer it to two months from now. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I think, first of all, there's a motion. May I raise a point of order, Madam Chair?
What is your point of order, trustee?
There's a motion on the table that needs to be discussed, as opposed to.
We are discussing it. It's been moved and seconded, and that's what I cautioned Trustee Caratow, and he was just speaking to the deferral.
I think, I thought he was speaking to my point concerning the original.
He just spoke to, that he wasn't against deferral, and that he was actually asking that we consider getting student feedback.
Okay. May I make a comment on the issue of student feedback?
Well, you know what? You're up next, so if you would actually let me go through, I would have called upon you, so you do have.
Not a problem. I'll wait my turn.
You have the floor, Trustee DeRosa. You are up in the queue.
Oh, thank you. That goes quick. I think if we're going to go for stakeholder feedback, we need to seriously consider how we define the stakeholder. Because the, and I'm just opening this for consideration, if we happen to go to a population where that will outnumber a particular group of experts, i.e. staff, principals, administration in this matter, I don't know that the stakeholder feedback would carry much weight or much value. So if we get to those crossroads where we're going out for stakeholder feedback, I would recommend and insist that the questions and the target for the feedback be very well considered and thought about. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. You're up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I lost my mouse. What we're talking about is, so let's look at a broader picture. Let's get out of the weeds. We're talking about value in enhancing the democratic process to our students. So with that, we're envisioning that there is more engagement. This is progression. This is vision. This is engaging our students earlier in the democratic process, and hopefully they become lifelong voters. You know, we get sixty-five percent voter turnout in most of our elections, if we're lucky. So I see value just in exercising that democratic muscle. Is change difficult? Yes, it's always change. If we use that as an excuse, we wouldn't be talking on this little plastic box, and you wouldn't be seeing my voice. We'd be with our Campbell suit cans and strings. So if we looked at this differently and said, okay, how can we implement this in this democratic process that allows every student one vote in an economical and efficient manner? I'm sure we would have, we'd put it out to the student body. We'd have ten suggestions coming in within an hour, you know, be it Survey Monkey or voting, you could even vote, every student has a unique email address. They can vote on Teams. You can put a survey on Teams, or it's just involved with an organization where we just conducted our elections on Teams. Sorry, on Zoom. So there is a solution. Do we have a desire? Do we have the will to change? Is there, do you see a benefit of the change? And then if we have the will and desire, there's always a solution, there's always a way to come up with a solution. So I support the Trustee Agnew's idea of bringing this to September. We can reorganize, get our ducks in a row. There are other boards that actually follow this process, not our furnace, but there are other boards, I believe Toronto District School Board does, and I believe Hamilton Works also does. So the trustees is very simple. Are we interested in vision? Are we interested in progression, engaging students? Or are we interested in the status quo?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Ms. Swenden, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to respond to Trustee DeRosa's comment a few minutes ago, just with regard to the consultation process. Just to remind trustees that for the policy consultation, it's not a survey, so we do not have a set of questions we are asking. It's an open-ended, here's the policy, here are the changes, tell us what you think. So we wouldn't be, you know, structuring it like a survey, we wouldn't be crafting any sort of carefully crafted questions. And the other piece that I wanted to point out is, we also wouldn't want to, and I'm really, I don't want to even imply in a public forum like this that we would be looking to in any way manipulate the consultation by looking at, and I don't think that's what Trustee DeRosa was saying, it just could be perceived that way. We would send it out to all our stakeholders, as we always do, and we wouldn't be choosing which stakeholders maybe need a louder voice, because they all have a voice, and to imply otherwise is undermining the consultation process. I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I wasn't implying anything of the sorts.
Thank you, Ms. Swenden. I appreciate your comments in regards to that. Trustee DeRosa, you're up next. I would ask, though, that if you have something new to add in regards to the motion that's on the table.
Yes. I would just like to remark that in the end, the voice, the real voice that is brought to the table is a voice where the vote counts. We have a situation here, maybe a very unfortunate situation, that the trustees at the table, according to the Education Act, their votes are not counted. So democracy falls short, to some degree, with respect to that. Just a comment. Thank you.
Trustee Duert, you have a comment in regards to the current motion on the table?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. I hope you allow me to do that. So I think Trustee Caratow has put in a lot of work, and he said he's not for deferral. I think we should just go ahead and take a vote on Trustee Agnew's motion, and then if it succeeds, then yes. If not, then we have to go back to the original. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Duert. So that said, we will go to a recorded vote.
Quite a privilege. What are we voting on right now? I just want to know.
I will reread the motion to you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Agnew made a motion, and Trustee Antomasi seconded, is that this policy be deferred to the September policy meeting in order to get recommendations from staff and to review costs, I can't read my own writing, of the current proposed changes to policy, and also to refer it to CAC regarding the possible development or recommendation of a spec ed liaison or representative.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll start with Trustee DeRosa.
Opposed.
Okay. Trustee Carabella.
I'm opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Caratow.
In favor of deferral.
Trustee Swan.
In favor of deferral.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
Opposed.
And I will vote as well, I'm sorry, Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
And I will vote as well. I am in favor. So that is one, two, three, four in favor, and one, two, three, four opposed. So that means the motion fails. So we revert back to the original motion, which is the policy as presented. But actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow Trustee Duert and Trustee Caratow to give closing remarks in regards to if there's anything new that they would like to add, and then we will go to a vote. So, Trustee Caratow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've said it once, and I think I've said it many times, that the basic principle of the amendments I proposed is democracy. And Trustee Murphy is correct in posing the question to this board, are we willing to have the vision to innovate and to give that democratic voice to our students? As it is currently, less than a fraction of one percent of secondary students in this board currently have the right to choose their student trustee, and the student trustee is the highest representative for student voice in this school board. There have been many problems that have been raised with our current solution and with our current system and with the solution that I proposed, but I believe with prudent overview and sensible changes and amendments, we can create a policy that will give democracy to the students, as well as one that will work monetarily and feasibly with the use of staff hours and everything like that. It's really about that principle of democracy, that the students have a voice that deserves to be heard, that has dignity, and ought to be exercised before the school board. Because the matters of this school board are very important to students in a way that doesn't always seem obvious, but students have their needs, have their opinions, and have their desires. They know what they want, and at the very minimum, they want to be able to tell us. They want to be able to tell the board exactly what they want. They want to be able to say who they want to represent them on the school board. I understand that it's a heavy job, one that bears a lot of responsibility, and that's why I've considered all of these qualifications that will remain necessary to ensure that our student trustee is competent. But I believe, and I pose this question to the board, is it not worth listening to the voice of the students and allowing them to elect a representative who will stand for them? It'll be difficult, of course, sure. It'll take a lot of thinking and a lot of planning and long processes that'll require a lot of work, but in the end, I believe it will all be worth it in pursuit of that great principle that our country is built upon, democracy. Why do we go to stakeholder feedback for every policy that this board proposes? Because we believe that the people of this board, the ratepayers, the staff, teachers, and students, all are very important in the functionings of this government, and I believe that for the students especially. I'm here as a student trustee, a representative of the students' will, and I'd be remiss if I didn't represent the students and allow them to have their voice. I was elected by a student senate, and that is a system that has worked, Superintendent McGilliguddy and Director Daly have noted, for twenty years. But there's always a room for approval. There's always a better way. And I believe that the system is ridiculously imperfect, even though it does work and produce competent candidates. I believe that that democratic element is truly lacking, and I think it's not morally correct for me to stand here and be a representative of the students unless I was truly elected by them. And that's why I want to ensure that every student trustee in the future of this board stands before the board, a representative of all the students, elected by all the students to make their voice and stand and speak and vote for all the students. I believe it should be for everyone, and if the board doesn't agree, then so be it. But that's basically the idea of these amendments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Caratow. Trustee Murphy, do you have any closing comments?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a little saying on my desk that says, if you're not the lead dog, the view never changes. So we should be the lead dog. We have the resources, we have the wherewithal and the knowledge within our board to be more. Does that mean we're not good now? No, we're great. But we could be more. We need to push ourselves. We need to get out of this comfort zone and be more proactive and look at being progressive and having vision. The reality of the output of this change will be nothing. The same three student senators more than likely would have got elected if we changed. These guys are rock stars. You've sat there and listened to them, the way their thought processes and how they present themselves and their attention to detail, how they're engaged and dynamic. There's not going to be different candidates coming forward. It's going to be the same candidates. We're looking at the other side of this. The other side of this is, are we engaging our student population? Is there a benefit of getting them involved in the democratic process earlier? Potentially, will better, more new ideas filter up from the grassroots because of this? That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about getting different candidates, because the reality is, these three are going to win in any format because they have everything and more. So that's really what we're trying to focus on, understanding that the changes are not perfect, and there's some concerns. That, to me, is a different discussion, those we can work through. The issue is, do we have desire and the will to have vision and be leaders and change and be progressive? Or do you want to just keep doing the same thing?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy, and I have not commented up until this point, but the only comment I would say is, I really do appreciate our student trustees and what they do bring forward. And I am a little sad that, you know, the ability to turn our minds to it and see if we can't come to a resolution that takes into consideration what the student's voice really is and what it represents. That said, are there any recommended changes to the policy? As presented? Oh, Superintendent McGilliguddy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in my original remarks, I was asking for a staged implementation of the proposed changes here, because I'm concerned that certainly this body can dictate any sort of process or any sort of requirements. I'm asking that we be mindful of the realistic timelines and order of implementation of pieces of. pieces of it in order to be successful. So as it's currently composed, it has, in my estimation, too many simultaneous changes to be implemented properly. So I go back to my earlier remarks, requesting that it ask for a widening of the franchise to secondary students only initially and first past the post only initially, in order to make the complications of the coding of this, apparently according to Superintendent Loffs, something we're going to have to go to a vendor for and have to pay for, to make that part of this successful before we moved on to, for instance, the ranked ballot innovation or the grade eight, the inclusion of grade eight electorate. Because if trying to do all three at once, it strikes me as being too much at once. And so the way it's currently constituted, that's what it's asking us for. I also go back to staff objection to the change in the endorsement requirement for a student trustee candidate, that it be the parish priest and not the school chaplaincy leader or the board chaplain. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent McGilliguddy. You know, my question would be, if staff has a variety of changes or recommendations, it would have been helpful to maybe see that phase-in process as you've described it, so that we could actually see it in comparison to what has been proposed. So I'm wondering if trustee Murphy and trustee Caratow would like to pull back on this policy as an action item for today and bring it to the September meeting so that we can get staff's recommendations in regards to it being staggered in. Trustee Murphy, trustee Caratow, would you be opposed to that?
No, I wouldn't be opposed. I don't think the intention or desire was ever to force change for the next vote, voting cycle. It was to land an end destination at a date that obviously doesn't put undue stress on our resources.
Point of order.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Point of order. This motion is on the table. It has to be voted on.
It's not a motion, it's a policy, and it's a policy action item, and it's up for discussion. So I rule against your point of order. Trustee Caratow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for your comments, Superintendent McGilliguddy. As I've said before, this really, for me, is about the principle of democracy and giving students a voice. And the roadmap that Superintendent McGilliguddy has brought forward is very pragmatic, it's very practical. And I believe this staggered implementation is the best way to eventually bring about that fullest and most perfect democracy steward to our students. I've always known that it would be difficult to implement. But if staff do come with a very prudently organized plan and how exactly it's going to be implemented, even over the course of many years, as long as it results in that good end goal, I am all in favor for it, and especially in favor if it gets us forward and makes everything run like a well-oiled machine. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent McGilliguddy.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is an implication that the system that's been in place for many years hasn't worked, doesn't work, doesn't represent. I'd like for people to really consider that in the sense that, take a look at the quality of the trustees that it has produced. And we can speak to two sets of trustees since we've been at the board, and they're all very impressive young men and women. I will not, I will grant that anything needs improvement. And I would use the approach of show me, not even the staggered, I think Superintendent McGilliguddy makes a very, very valid point and a very reasonable point. But the solution, what are we replacing it with? It is not...
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just have a question here, and I'm wondering how you decided to overrule the point of order? Because this is, to my mind, this is an action item. This is on the floor, it's been seconded. How can we overrule a point of order that was raised? Can you explain that, Madam Chair?
I've asked trustee Murphy and trustee Caratow if they would consider to rescinding this policy at this time. So that is what I'm making reference to.
Madam Chair, the policy belongs to the table.
Trustee Duarte, I'm answering your question. I will, I've let you speak. I would like for you to let me finish, and then you can respond however you would like. So it is up to trustee Murphy and trustee Caratow if they choose that they want to rescind this. As Superintendent McGilliguddy has made several recommendations in regards to phasing in, and I don't believe that we are in a position to address all of those phasing in pieces. There would be a lot of questions on it. We haven't even seen what they look like. And this is a fairly extensive policy. It has been on the table since last meeting. So I would have assumed that that information would have been forthcoming. So because it was not, and for us to be able to review it and see what the staff recommends, I had asked that if trustee Caratow and trustee Murphy would consider rescinding it. So the point of order for me to ask that question, there is no point of order.
Once again, Madam Chair, can I respond to that?
Go ahead, trustee Duarte.
To my mind, it's very simple. We have this policy here, policy for review. It's been seconded. It belongs to the Board of Trustees. Just like when you go to a board meeting, you have an action item on the table, it belongs to the Board of Trustees. We cannot just pull it back. There has to be a vote on that, and that's how we should proceed. Now, I don't know what we are quoting to bring the point of order up, to refuse a point of order, but it belongs to the Board of Trustees, and we are all sitting on the table. I think we should go by the same principles as the board meeting.
Madam Chair, I would like to move to rescind the motion.
Thank you, trustee Murphy, which is what I had commented, that's, thank you. Do we have a seconder? Trustee Agnew? Is there any discussion in regard? Well, I don't think you can, because it's a withdrawal, so rescind it. So we'll go to recorded vote.
Point of order, Madam Chair. This item is not rescindable, simply because it is on the table, it's up for a vote and needs to either vote. The only other way, it doesn't belong to the first person that moved it and the person that seconded. It belongs...
We lay it on the table.
Has to be taken to a vote.
We can lay it on the table and move, we lay it on the table.
Too late for laying it on the table.
Sorry, trustee Antumasi. Trustee Antumasi, let's maintain some order. So I believe...
It's a point of order, so...
Trustee Antumasi, give me a minute to respond. So as opposed to rescinding, I think what trustee Murphy may be referring to is a withdrawal, which he could withdraw his motion.
It's on the table.
No, you cannot, Madam Chair.
Can you refer to what you're, can you refer to the bylaw that you're referring to, trustee Antumasi?
So you go to, under motions, motions, once they're on the table, they belong to the board. So it cannot be withdrawn because you've got a first and a second. So the action has been commenced. The only thing you can do now is take it to a vote.
Just give me one moment on this.
Sure, no problem.
In regards to your point of motion, trustee Antumasi, 10.19 of the bylaw states that after a motion is read by the chair, it shall be deemed to be in possession of the board. A motion may, by consensus, be withdrawn for the purpose of obtaining further relevant information and/or background to be included when this will serve to clarify the motion. So trustee Murphy, is your motion to withdraw?
Yes, it was, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Do we have a seconder? Trustee Agnew? I will now take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee Caratow.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Trustee Antumasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
And trustee DeRosa.
Opposed.
And I am also in favor. The motion to withdraw fails. Is there an appetite to continue for the changes that have been brought forward by Superintendent McGilliguddy? So trustee, Superintendent McGilliguddy, do you happen to have your comments available for us to see on how it would be phased in?
Yes, Madam Chair. I did write them out before I came on this evening, so I can send that to Superintendent Ballow, if that's the process you would prefer.
Okay, if we can do that, and maybe what we'll do is, we'll move on to, while you do that and we can get it up, let's move on to the next item, and we'll come back to this item so we can finish it, so we can see that information.
Point of order. I'm not understanding that. We're just putting this on hold. I think we need to vote now. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, I'm putting it on hold until we can see Superintendent McGilliguddy's information on the screen.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood.
And consistent with time, so that we make the most of our time and everybody's time that they're spending on here, so that we can move to the next action item until we can get that on and we'll come back to this item. 2-5, selection of learning and library materials. Can I get a motion that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-25, selection of learning and library materials, be forwarded along with amendments to the June 16, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Seconded by trustee Murphy. Superintendent Percasim.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just going over the actual policy in the commentary section, the purpose of Policy 225, selection of learning and library materials, is to define the approval of learning and library materials that enhance religious, moral, intellectual, physical and social growth of each student, respectful of faith and inclusion, while acknowledging individual skills and abilities. The minor changes to the policy are in keeping with current wording and recently reviewed policies and procedures, most specifically Policy 245, equity and inclusive education. Minimal distinctions and clarifications were also required with regard to the requirements section, specifically the selection of learning materials, library materials, as well as the consideration of learning and library materials. So the revised policy is placed before you for review and consideration by the committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Percasim. Do we have any questions? Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. In the section where it says selection of library materials, it says it is based on the evaluation criteria outlined by the Ministry of Education document, Guidelines for Approval of Textbooks. This government document has a section that says this, "The content must be free from racial, ethno-cultural, religious, regional, gender-related or age-related bias, bias based on disability, sexual orientation, socioeconomic background, occupation, political affiliation or membership in a specific group, and biased by omission. The material should present more than one point of view and be free from discriminatory, exclusionary, or inappropriately valued language photographs and illustrations." This statement is right in the Guidelines for Approval of Textbooks. I see no need to put the pardon where it says, "in consideration of Policy II-45." We have enough there, it's already in the statement, it doesn't need to be said again. So I will not be supporting these amendments with that pardon ran included. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Okay, well, I have something to say, but maybe trustee, trustee O'Brien would just like to make an amendment then and get a seconder? Or I have something I'd like to add. Just on the bullets just above requirements, it says, this, right there. "This material will be consistent with directives of the Ministry of Education and consistent with Catholic values to meet the requirements of the course or subject guidelines for which they're intended." I'd like to make that more specific and say that be consistent with Catholic teaching. Thank you. That's why I'd like to make an amendment for that, just to make it more specific, that it follows the teachings of our faith, because, yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
We've got a few other people up, and then we'll go back to amendments. Trustee Agnew.
And through you, Madam Chair. Just with respect to trustee O'Brien's comments, I'm wondering if Superintendent Percasim would be able to respond back to that suggestion about not needing to reference all of that information, because it's already being referenced in another way. I would have to assume that it's there for a reason. So I'm wondering, again, if Superintendent Percasim could respond back to that concern?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. With regard to the references that we provide, the Guidelines for Approval of Textbooks is a ministry-published document, and as we are aware, we do follow Ministry of Education guidelines for textbooks, and that we do maintain our right to ensure that the books that we select are in keeping with our Catholic teachings, our gospel values, as we know that the bishops are in charge of Catholic education formally, when we talk about who is deciding on what we are teaching. So we are always mindful of that. However, excluding the guidelines at this point in time, I'm not too sure that it meets the requirements with regard to equity and inclusion that we are all expected to follow in the province of Ontario. I don't believe that it is a challenge to our Catholic teachings. As a matter of fact, I feel that it complements our Catholic teachings and gospel values quite well, because indeed it is the way we live our lives. And so therefore, I don't understand the exclusion of a reference from the Ministry of Education. I certainly support the comment around adding Catholic teaching specifically. I have no objection to that being entered in. It is something that we practice fervently. However, we're also mindful of the fact that we feel that when we say that we are following the directives of the Ministry of Education and consistent with Catholic values, I believe that our Catholic values and our Catholic teachings are one in the same, but certainly if we want to add teachings and values, I wholeheartedly support that. Having said that, we do have enough information with regard to the equity and inclusive expectations outlined herein, but the guidelines continue to be the reference of record for textbooks in the province of Ontario.
Thank you, Superintendent Percasim. And I feel the same way. I think having that in there only reinforces, you know, what it is that we're trying to say, and it is adhering to the ministry. So I just wanted to find out if there was anything more to that that I was missing. So thank you for that.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I just have a question too for Superintendent Percasim. She just said that the bishops are in charge. I'd like that clarified, because I don't think they're...
I'm sorry, trustee Carabella. I'm sorry, Trustee Carabella, you, I, we lost you there.
Here I am, sorry. My mouse went over the, um, icon there. So I don't know what you heard, but I was saying that, um, Superintendent Percasim just said that the bishops are in charge of our education, and I like clarification on that, because that's not my understanding regards to curriculum and, and many things. They, they recommend, but, uh, and they're involved, but I don't think they're in charge. So, and, um, with regards to that, actually, on, in the requirements of selection of learning materials, I was surprised that here we don't even mention the Institute for Catholic Education and their, uh, perhaps their lists that they have of recommended reading, um, for us that we, we can use. So surprised not to see that. Is there a reason for that, or could we include them and their lists? Thank you.
Superintendent Percasim, can you, um, respond to Trustee Carabella?
Um, yes, thank you. Pleased to respond. Um, I'm, I'm hearing, um, the three different statements. The very first one being is that very much Catholic education exists, um, in our, not just in our province, but it exists from the perspective of the fact that the bishops are the overseers of Catholic education for the Pope in Rome. So basically, this is not, uh, a new concept when we talk about the minutia of the functioning of a Catholic school board or the Catholic education system within each individual province. Um, I am not referring to that specifically, but overall, a very excellent, um, article, if you have the opportunity, to read, Who's the Boss by Mark McGowan, uh, outlines very carefully the history of Catholic education and how it is structured, and who supervises and overlooks Catholic education, um, quite frankly, in the world. Um, first of all, the, um, the other, uh, commentary around looking at the Institute for Catholic Education and the Catholic Curriculum Corporation are very important. Uh, branches of Catholic education in our province, always very pleased to work with them, always in collaboration with them. So certainly adding those two organizations within this policy, I have absolutely no objection to. However, in our work in Catholic education and certainly in Halt and Catholic, um, that is, uh, that is a presumption of ours that, uh, these, uh, the, uh, the ICE, as well as CCC, are two branches that we work very closely with. So I trust that's helpful.
Thank you, Superintendent Percasim. Uh, Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Uh, I have other questions, but not a follow-up if there's, I see Mr. Daly's in the hands up.
Okay, uh, thank you. Trust, uh, Director Daly.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair, and, uh, this is maybe just, uh, to serve as a comment. Um, Policy II forty five, Equity and Inclusive Education, I'll read in part from the purpose of that policy. Uh, the Halt and Catholic District School Board recognizes that all people are created equal in the image of God, each with an immeasurable characteristics deserving of dignity. In accordance with the Church's teachings, is the policy the Board to provide in all its operations an educational environment which supports and enables diversity within its Catholic community. A little bit further on, the Board recognizes that the school system gives preeminence to the tenants of the Catholic faith, congruent with the protection afforded in the Ontario Human Rights Code, the Constitution Act, and confirmed in the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Um, I'm not sure what's objectionable there.
Thank you, Director Daly. Um, do we have any other questions? Trustee Carabella.
Oh, thank you. So I was wondering, why is the support, when it talks about staff and it's taking out support staff? Why are we taking out the word support and just saying other staff? What is the reason for that?
Um, through you, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm pleased to answer that. Um, I think that we're looking at inclusive language. We are trying to refer to all of our staff as being, um, you know, at the same level and contributing to our decisions in this regard, and so we don't need to identify people as support staff individually. All staff, um, and their input is relevant to us, and so that is why support staff was removed in this instance.
I have a follow-up, but like a different question. May I, uh, proceed, Mrs. Chair? Thank you. So, um, on the last, on page three or four, about the committee membership for the review of materials shall include, and it's a very long list, like really long list of who's going to be on a committee. I'd like to know, has, like, does this happen? Like, how would a parent, if it's the parent that recognizes maybe some textbook or some novel that's questionable? Is this the process they have to undergo? I find it very not parent-friendly, in a sense, and making it very difficult for somebody to bring something forward or, you know, get, get something questionable out of the school. And so that's my one point, and has there been any experience recently with a book? Or a textbook, or probably not a textbook, but a book, uh, novels that, uh, would have gone through this process? Like, how used is it? Another, thank you.
Um, I'm assuming that's directed to Superintendent Percasim. Superintendent Percasim, are you, are you clear on the question?
Um, I, I think I am. I think we're talking about the committee membership structure for consideration of, uh, learning or library material. Um, often we do, um, you know, from the school administration perspective, and sometimes family of school superintendent have questions around, um, some of the literature that we may be using, and we often are able to, um, defend the choices with parents to a successful degree when we talk about what is age-appropriate, um, in our system, as well as what is in keeping with our Catholic gospel values and teachings. Um, I don't recall that anything has reached this level of late, um, because we're usually able to satisfy the, uh, questions that parents may have at the school level or with the family of school superintendent. So at this point, um, it is not meant to be, um, um, unfriendly to parents. It is just meant to be a process that is, that would ensure that as many stakeholders as possible had a voice at the table. Um, we do understand that we have a, uh, team of individuals, of, of teachers, of educators, of administrators, of librarians, and people who are, um, well-versed in the literature that we do choose, um, vet our materials prior to them being released, um, to our communities and our school communities. And so we choose them with great care. Having said that, uh, we feel it's important that there is a process for consideration, but that it be a fulsome and responsible one that is representative of as many stakeholders as possible.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Superintendent Percasim. Uh, Trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just want to point a clarification, and I don't proclaim to, to know the details of this. But, uh, are we, um, suggesting this, these changes within the guidelines put forward by the ministry? Um, I believe the question was answered, but I'd like, I'd like, I'd like it answered again. I'm just looking for comfort that we're not going beyond the ministry guidelines or that we're not, uh, missing the inclusion of certain, um, ministry guidelines. Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Percasim, do you want to assure Trustee DeRosa?
Um, thank you through you, Madam Chair. I wasn't the individual who proposed, uh, that guidelines be removed from the, uh, action report, pardon me, from the policy, uh, perhaps two twenty-five. I think that, um, I was actually stating that I felt it was important that the guidelines remain, uh, as a reference document, as they are. Um, the current, uh, guideline available from the Ministry of Education. However, I believe there was a proposal, um, made by Trustee O'Brien to remove it, and so I don't think that I have any comment in that regard. That would be something for the Board of Trustees to investigate. I do support it being included. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Percasim. Uh, Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a point of clarification for Superintendent Percasim. I didn't want that guideline taken out. I wanted it left in. It's this other little tag, uh, and in consideration of Policy II dash forty-five, equity and inclusive education, I don't think we need, and I want to respond to something else Superintendent Percasim said about equity and inclusion and Catholicity being mutually inclusive. I taught the Catholic Board for twen- uh, the Public Board for twenty-seven years, and they had a very comprehensive equity and inclusion policy. It drove the Board. But we also had to include in our libraries books on Wicca, which is witchcraft, to accommodate that population, because that is now a recognized religion. So I wanted to say about this policy is, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And this policy is not broke. It stands good the way it is. I say, forget the changes. Let's just keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. If there's no further questions, we'll, we'll take it to a vote. Uh, Trustee Agnew? In favor? Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Car-
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Uh, Trustee DeRosa?
I believe it was voted-
No, no, sorry. Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
Uh, and I am in favor. However, the policy fails. Um, it will not be brought forward with the changes to the next board meeting. Um, do we have those, um, those proposed changes for item four point, uh, four point three? Awesome. Thank you. So we're going to revert back to item four point three on student trustees on the Halt and Catholic District School Board. So, um, okay, so the establishment of web-based, so can you scroll down a little bit there? It starts after in order, nope, just a little too much there, Janine, just, uh, there you go. In order to end up where I understand the proposed policy changes tends. So the proposed changes from staff are the establishment of web-based development code, either in-house IT staff with such capabilities or via the services of a vendor. First to widen the franchise from the current electoral system of fifty to seventy student senators to approximately twelve thousand. Secondary students featuring a ballot with a necessary regional representation, but initially retaining a first past the post electoral count. Based upon the HDSB experience, such a system could be devised, tested, and ready for utilization for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So, so essentially, what would happen is, is the proposed changes would stay, except for it would go from, it would be a phase-in system totally effective by twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent McGilligutti, as I, I read it. So the first election with the new changes would take place in twenty twenty-two.
Ye- yes, uh, Madam Chair, but only, uh, to include the secondary students in that ballot, and only using first past the, first past the post. Subsequent changes would be the innovation of instant runoff voting, and then following that in a subsequent year to add the grade eights. So really, what it's suggesting is only, uh, including the change to include all secondary students for the initial phase.
Right. Correct. And that that would take place, though, the first initial phase would be of February twenty twenty-two for the following school year.
That is correct. Thank you.
And then after that, it would be the grade eights, and that would be a supplementary, a process that would be implemented. Um, but the other changes, and then the other recommendation is that it's not pastoral candid, or pastoral, uh, school chaplaincy, sorry, that it would just be, or system chaplain, that it would be parish priest.
That is correct, which doesn't require a change, but it would, it's a change to the proposal, but it would be the current process.
Be the current process. Okay. So, um, in regards to the proposed changes with the current policy as presented, but implementing the changes that staff have brought forward, specifically Superintendent McGilligutti, um, do we have, how are we feeling on this? Can we get a consensus on these changes? I'm going to ask around the table. Trustee Agnew?
I still would like to add something in about Spec Ed. I think we're ignoring that piece. If we're going to look at changes, I, I, I just think we'd be remiss in not providing some language around that, which is why I wanted to differ.
Okay, so Spec Ed, so we'll make note of that. Um-
Madam Chair, can I have a point of order, please?
What is your point of order, Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Oh, my point of order is I would like to, um, add Trustee Agnew's proposal of allowing Spec Ed representation to be voted on as a separate item under ten point one-one, which would be a subdivision of questions. So whether or not this motion fails, I would like to have a separate vote on including Spec Ed representation in anything we do moving forward. Thank you.
So I don't believe that that's a point of order. I think that you're, or that's a request, is that you, you want-
It is a point of order, because what I'm asking you to do is to add separately from this particular policy, under ten point eleven, the ability to have representation on the Senate for Spec Ed students, regardless of whether or not this motion or this particular policy passes or not.
So to be clear, Trustee Ian Tomasi, we haven't gotten to that point, so there is no point of order. So we are dealing specifically right now with Superintendent McGilligutti's recommendations, and Trustee Agnew has asked for a, a, a consideration to be put in regards to Spec Ed. So when we get to that piece-
Exactly, so I'm, I'm-
It's not a point of order, so that being said, when we get to that, we will, we will address your concern under ten point one-one of the bylaws. Oh, I am going to ask now, Trustee Agnew, um, are you in support, though, of the changes that, uh, Superintendent McGilligutti has made?
Can I make a point of order on something else? Because you're asking now, oh, may I make a point of order, Madam Chair?
Can you state your point of order and what it falls under, under the bylaws, please?
Well, you're asking, you're asking for a vote, like, we should be voting.
For a consensus on the changes that staff have brought forward, just like we have dealt with with any other time in regards to policy recommendations or changes brought forward. So we are asking for a consensus. It's not a recorded vote. It's to see if there's an appetite to make the changes that have been proposed by staff. So again, I'm going to ask, what is your point of order? All right, so we're going to-
Madam Chair, I'd like a recorded vote in this.
So we can record the vote on the recommended changes in regards to what's being proposed by Superintendent McGilligutti. So Trustee Agnew is in favor. Yeah. Trustee DeRosa?
I can't help feeling we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, so I'm opposed. Uh, this process, uh, it just is continuing on in the wrong way. I think we need to have a serious look at this, because the item is, is important to look at, but not the matter in which we're trying to push it through. Thank you.
I couldn't agree with you more. However, we have had two motions to try to step back in regards to taking a further step back and-
I thought, I thought we were done, man.
No, not, there's still the original policy on the table.
All right, then, let's take it to a vote.
To bring you up to speed, Trustee DeRosa, the two motions that were brought to the table that we voted on was a motion to defer for more information based on what staff have brought forward and, um, to, to get some feedback and some costs in regards to, so that we could revisit it and see if there was an appetite for any further changes or to revert back or to whatever the decision of the trustees were. Then there was a further motion by Trustee Murphy to withdraw his policy. Um, however, they were both voted down, so which means we're back to the policy on the table with the changes as proposed.
Yeah. Yeah. Madam Chair, if you, um, my, just one comment. I am, in principle, I am opposed to, uh, designing solutions on the fly in the manner in which we're doing it now. So I don't have, I don't have a fundamental, uh, objection to what we are trying to do in terms of solving a problem, but we are doing it on the fly, and that's never a good solution to get to a problem. Thank you very much.
Trustee DeRosa, again, I will reiterate that the ability to, and, and one of my comments was, was that we didn't have this information from Superintendent McGill Cutty. And that, you know, in light of that, that deferring it would be a solution. And there was two proposed, two motions that were brought to do that. So unfortunately, this is where we're at. This is the will of the Board, so we will go through the process. So that said, you deferred.
I'm opposed, man.
You have, um, you're opposed. Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Uh, Trustee O'Brien?
Okay. Point of, question of privilege, are we only voting on the changes, um, uh, put forward by Superintendent McGill Cutty right now?
Yes. Trustee O'Brien, I was trying to do a consensus feel around the table, however, Trustee DeRosa has asked for it to be recorded.
Okay. I will say opposed.
Okay. Uh, Trustee Antomasi?
Uh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I, I can't proceed any further with this, simply because if you're looking for general consensus on this particular item that you're adding to that particular policy, this item was only made known to us now. It can't be included. This would have had to been brought forward beforehand. You can't just drop it into the policy and add it to the policy now, I'm sorry. So I have to be, uh, uh, in opposition of it.
Okay. Again, Trustee Antomasi, I don't disagree with you. However, again, it's been, it was asked to be deferred so that we could review all this and look into it further. However, that was not the will of the Board. It was voted down twice, so this is where we're at. So Trustee Antomasi is opposed. Trustee Duert?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
I'm in favor of, uh, the suggested changes by Superintendent McGill Cutty.
Thank you. Trustee Carata?
I'm also in favor. I believe it's the best, suggested changes are prudent and not to be considered.
Thank you. Trustee Swan?
Um, I'm in favor for the suggested changes.
Thank you, and I myself am also in favor of the suggested changes. However, that is one, two, three, four, five opposed. So the suggested changes fail. So unless there is any other, uh, proposed changes, we will revert back to the original policy as presented.
Question, Madam Chair, sorry. Did Trustee Agnew not have a proposed change as well?
Nope. There was no change. I can read you the motion again. The motion was to defer to the September policy meeting in order to get recommendations from staff to review the costs of the proposed, uh, policy as presented and to refer it to CAC, to RE, regarding a development or a recommendation of a possible Spec Ed liaison or representative. So again, there was no change to it. It was simply an opportunity to defer so that the trustees could get some more time about. Are you asking for a, a reconsideration, Trustee O'Brien?
Well, I, there's a lot of things in that, in that motion, that change you just put forward through, some I would go for, some I would not. I, I wonder if we should split them up. Um, honestly, there's one I'm in favor of and one I'm not, so.
So there's no changes, right? The, the what's asked is for the recommendations from staff, which is what we have in front of us. The other was, uh, what would that policy, because it was a question that came forward, I believe, from, I want to say, Trustee Duert, uh, in regards to what that cost was, or, or Trustee Antomasi, sorry, it was Trustee Antomasi in regards to what the proposed policy with the changes, what it would cost us. Um, and then there was a discussion in regards to having, um, a Spec Ed representation on the, uh, student trustee, uh, portion. So that's why that motion read the way it did. So there's no actual changes to anything. It was simply information gathering and postponing the policy.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So i- i- is, is, was there, are you asking for reconsideration in regards to it, Trustee, uh, O'Brien?
No. I'm going to say opposed.
Okay. So then let's go back to the original policy. Uh, Trustee Duert, did you have your hand up in regards to this?
Uh, can you ask for a comment? I was just going to say that Spec Ed is something which, which I would consider, but I don't know how we're going to split it up. We got to talk about the original policy. Uh, that's, uh, Spec Ed is something I would, uh, I consider dear, and, uh, I would like to support that, but I do not know how we can build it into this. But, uh, we are back to the original policy and we got to vote on the original policy, I guess.
So I think at this point, in regards to that, we can look at section 10.11, which is what Trustee Antomasi brought forward, which was a subdivision of question. Um, however, I don't know, um... I know that it can be voted on separately, but we don't know what that looks like. The point was for it to be referred to CAC to get some input from them. Um, so I'm not sure, Trustee Antomasi, what your intentions are in regards to 10.11.
My intent, through you, Madam Chair, thank you for yielding the floor to me. Um, so my intent was that we can, separate to this particular policy, add a motion that would allow us to include the Spec Ed component that Trustee Agnew suggested and vote on it separately from this particular policy that we're reviewing at this particular juncture.
So are you then-
That can be achieved through subdivision of questions. As such, I would ask Trustee Agnew to restate the component that she wishes to address. We would separate it from the policy that has been read now and vote on it separately.
Uh, Trustee Agnew is asking that she has the opportunity to review it with CAC first before she makes it. And maybe, and that's why she had put on the table to defer-
That's correct. So you can still make it subject to review and input by CAC. That can be added into her motion or, um, subdivision of, uh, question.
Um, okay.
Madam Chair?
I, I'm going to actually hand the gavel to Trustee Agnew, um, and I would like to actually make a motion to defer this policy, uh, pending review and recommendation from CAC.
But, but the point of order, Madam Chair, before you give up the gavel, um, we've already taken a vote on deferring it, and it failed. You can't, in the same meeting and on the same motion, bring the same matter up again to defer.
It's not the same matter. It's in regards to specifically to CAC, Trustee Antomasi. It's in regards to-
But it hasn't even been first and seconded. So how can you defer something that hasn't been first and seconded?
I just made the motion. I hand for the gavel.
CAC question is a separate issue. Can we treat it that way, please?
Sorry, point of order, um, Madam Chair, I, I, you know, I know Trustee DeRosa wants to have something to say here, but there's still conversation on the table. So if you could allow that to continue?
So my motion is to defer to, to get feedback on the current policy from CAC in regards to a Spec Ed.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a discussion. I have my hand up.
Yep. So let me just take a look, so hold on one second, uh, Trustee Carabella. I just see that there was, Trustee DeRosa had his hand up. I don't know if it was in reference to this. Um, Trustee DeRosa, do you want, was your comment related to this conversation?
Ye- yes. I would like to make the point that we would be well advised to separate the CAC question away from, uh, the policy at this point because the policy was already voted on, right?
Okay. Uh, no, we haven't voted on it. Uh, so that was your question?
So I'm happy to consider separately a question on CAC away from this policy.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee DeRosa. Trustee Duert, you had a comment or a question?
Madam Chair, uh, yes. Uh, it's quite evident and clear, uh, we are hating, but, uh, I'd like the CAC question to be considered separately. I'd like to support, uh, the, the, it going to CAC and coming back with, uh, information, but it has to be separate. So the changes that are in this policy right now that are redlined is something which I do not, uh, agree to support on. So if we want to defer it to CAC, it has to be the original policy with the consideration of CAC. How can that be achieved, Madam Chair?
Madam, point of order, point of clarification, call it whatever point you want. I think the two questions are completely-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Trustee DeRosa. Okay. So can you just tell me what your point of order is?
I would like to vote on the policy as it is right-
What your point of order is as it pertains to the bylaws? Can you give me what your specific point of order is?
I don't have it. It wasn't a point of order. I was just trying to get my voice-
Sporte, did you want to, sorry, what was your question?
So, Madam Chair?
I'm talking to Trustee Duert. What was your question, Trustee Duert?
Madam, uh, Chair, all I'm saying is the policy as it stands now, redlined, is not what I'm looking to defer. The original policy as it stands without redline, if we can defer that, including the CAC component, I'd be willing to consider that. So I don't want to defer the whole policy as it stands with redline and take that to CAC. No, that's not what I'm looking for. So how can we incorporate, take the original policy as it stands now, policy I-26, without any redline, and take that to CAC for consideration of adding only the CAC component, uh, for a student trustee? How do we do that?
Okay, so-
Two separate things altogether.
Okay. So let me just go on to Trustee Carabella, and then we'll come back to that point. Trustee Carabella, did you have a question or a comment?
Thank you. Um, so I would agree with the Trustee Duert because I would think that we vote on this policy the way it is, and then we talk about CAC representation at the CAC table. This is something you could bring forward as a discussion item and then bring the policy that's currently at our Board and talk about CAC, uh, talk about Spec Ed reps that way. That's how I would-
So, so I understand what you're saying, but I think that we need to do is, first of all, once we turn down this policy, we'd have to wait a year to bring it back again. Um, and then the second piece to that is that, you know, there are some proposed changes in there that could have effect on that population. And so I think we would want to bring forward the policy as, um, being suggested here to CAC for their feedback. I wouldn't, I wouldn't look, be looking at that original policy to bring to them. I'd want to bring this policy that's on the table to them for their feedback.
Uh, follow up for that?
Sure.
Um... Um, yeah, I, I don't agree. I think you, you can bring it back. Uh, someone else can propose it at CAC. I mean, I've been on around the table. You can easily bring it up. It's a different venue. It's not the board table.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. And, uh, Trustee DeRosa, you had a comment?
Um, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I, uh, I just wanted to reiterate what I think I'm hearing around the table is that this policy should be voted on as is right now. And then the CAC question should be considered separately within, uh, within, uh, CAC. I think mixing the two just convolues the whole thing. So, um, let's take, uh, let's proceed that way. That's, that, that's what I would be in favor of. Okay? Thank you.
You had a comment?
Um, Madam Chair, yes. So, uh, by the time it goes to CAC and by the time we have, uh, due thought put into that, it's definitely going to take a year to come back. So I'm just wondering, uh, i- if we vote on this as it stands right now, and then we start the process at CAC. It takes a year to come back. We come back with a good, robust, uh, uh, policy back in a year. I think we can always bring this policy back in a year time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Duert. Trustee Guzzo, you had, um, you have the floor?
I guess I, I am fine with separating the two, uh, and bringing one together. Uh, I mean, not bringing them together. So my motion is fine, uh, as presented. It can be considered separately from what is currently being presented.
Is there any questions at all before we vote on, uh, Trustee Guzzo's motion?
I'd like it read out again, please.
Sure. Trustee Guzzo?
Uh, the motion is that we, uh, defer the policy to CAC for recommendations uh, in regards to, uh, the recommendation or development of a Spec Ed, um, liaison or representative.
Okay. Is there any questions on that before we take a vote?
Madam Chair, are we voting on the actual policy without the CAC component, or have we done that already?
We're voting on Trustee Guzzo's motion.
Okay. Just a point of clarification because I'm, I'm having a hard time keeping track of what, what we're doing here. Did we vote on the policy as it reads right now, on the, on the motion?
No, not because Trustee Guzzo wanted to make this, um, this motion.
Okay, but the two motions are separate, correct?
No. She was suggesting that this, that this policy in, as presented to us now, be deferred to CAC for their recommendations and their review as it pertains to, um, the Spec Ed, uh, portion. So it would be deferring this policy so that we have a chance to bring it to CAC.
What would prevent us from bringing the question to CAC anyways?
So nothing prevents us from bringing it there. The thing that I'm trying to do is I'm trying to say with this policy is that there's been some changes to this policy that are affecting representation, and that could be affecting the way that things are currently done. And with that, there's a Spec Ed component that we may want to consider. And for those reasons, my suggestion would be to bring this particular policy as redlined and suggested to CAC for their review.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments on, uh, Trustee Guzzo's motion? No. I'll take a recorded vote then. Okay, so, uh, I'm just going to do this randomly, so I don't have a piece of paper in front of me. I'm going to go Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Okay. Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Duert?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
True, Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Carabella? Oh, I got you, sorry. Who am I missing?
I think you're missing me.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
All right. So motion fails. I'm going to now hand this back over to Trustee Guzzo to continue chairing the meeting.
Thank you. So we're going to go back to the original policy that's on the table. Um, so, uh, at this point, I'm assuming there's no further discussions, so we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
So, excuse me, Madam Chair?
Uh, yeah, Swan?
Trustee Daly has his hand up, or-
Yep.
Director Daly has his hand up.
Sorry, Trustee Swan, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to say that Director Daly has his hand up.
Yes, I see it right now. Director Daly.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, and I, I'm not trying to slow down the process, but, um, and with, with all due respect to trustees. So just so we're clear, uh, the vote we're holding right now is to either accept this policy as it stands, um, or not. So we're accepting the policy with the changes suggested around, um, changing the requirement about a parish priest having to endorse a candidate and those other changes. That's all I wanted to say.
Correct. We're, we're now voting on the current red changes as there were no other, uh, recommended, uh, changes or proposals from any of the trustees. So we're going to go to a recorded vote in regards to the policy as presented.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Duert?
Madam Chair, I just have, uh, if you look at the meeting chat right now, uh, oh, sorry, I just received a message from Trustee Antomasi that he was bounced off the meeting, so he's back, I guess.
Okay. So we're going to go to a recorded vote.
Am I back in?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we are now voting on the recommendations that policy I-26, student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board be forwarded to the June 19th, 2020 board meeting for approval to be forwarded for stakeholder, uh, feedback to be reviewed at the September 8th, 2020 policy committee meeting. Um, it was moved by Trustee, uh, Murphy and seconded by Trustee Agnew. It was moved by trustee Murphy and seconded by trustee Agnew. So we will now go to a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Antumasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
And trustee Guzzo, myself, I'm in favor. However, it is five to three, so the policy fails. I just want to take the opportunity to thank trustee Caratao for all of your hard work in bringing this, this policy forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I love to serve.
Moving on to policy 4.5, or item 4.5, policy IV dash 02, outdoor facility maintenance, security. So the motion, can I have somebody move that the policy committee recommends that policy IV dash 02, outdoor facility enhancements, maintenance and security be forwarded to the June 16, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Agnew moves it. Can I have a seconder?
I second it.
Trustee O'Brien? Superintendent Merrick? Are you with us tonight?
I am here. Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. We have the outdoor facility enhancements, maintenance and security policy. It's a fairly new policy, just dates back to 2017, and as such, it's still fairly up to date, and recommend no changes to the policy at this time. But happy to take any questions that trustees may have on it.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, I will take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I have to step away for a minute. I'll be back in 30 seconds.
All right, trustee DeRosa, we're in the middle of a vote. Are you in favor? Okay. The vote will continue. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Madam Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, in future, if you could just note it in the chat, however.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can we get your vote? Are you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. The motion passes. The policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Moving on to the last action item, 4.6, policy V dash 16. Can I have somebody move that the policy committee recommends that policy V dash 16, copyright, visual identity, and intellectual property protection be forwarded along with amendments to the June 16, 2020 regular board meeting for approval?
I move it.
Trustee O'Brien, seconded by?
I'll second.
Trustee DeRosa. Ms. Wynden?
Thank you, and to you, Madam Chair. The policy before you was first adopted in June of 2013. It provides a framework for the appropriate application, distribution, and protection of the board's intellectual property, which includes the board's official logo and related visual identifiers and representations of the HCSB, as well as material, whether it be written, visual, visual, audio, et cetera, created for board purposes. Most of the changes within the policy, if you go through, are minor in terms of content. You will see at the, at the start, at the front end of the policy, the section that was previously under purpose actually fits a little bit better under principles. So we've moved that, that those five bullets under principles, and the purpose has now become to provide a framework for the appropriate use, distribution, and protection of intellectual property belonging to the Halton Catholic District School Board. Other than that, and a few minor changes to wording, there, the, the most significant change would be the deletion of, on page three of four, so page 38 of your entire package, deleted a bullet that refers to fair dealing guidelines. This, this particular bullet is more applicable to copyright as it pertains to education. So fair dealing guidelines, and there is a link within the policy, which if you wanted to go in and look in a little bit more detail, but fair dealing guidelines more or less gives some latitude to, to schools to use copyright material. This doesn't really fall in line with the rest of this policy, which is, which pertains to our visual identity and intellectual property, and it falls under public relations. This would actually be better suited under educational policy or procedure. And because there's no other policy right now that would, that would house this, this comment, and it does fall, the requirements are under PPM 157, so they are currently being undertaken because they're legislated. They fall under library services. So what we are proposing is to incorporate this into standalone procedure. So other than that, the rest of the changes are just minor wording, and the policy is before you for review and consideration, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wynden. Do we have any questions? Seeing as there are none, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
You did it again. In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
Again.
Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Motion carries. It will be brought to the next policy meeting. I mean, not the next policy meeting, the next board meeting. Now we're moving on to discussion items. There are none. Item six, information item 6.1, administrative procedure VI dash 34, fencing at board sites. Superintendent Merrick?
Sorry, these are the procedures?
Yes, we're on to the information items. Is there anything that we should be, take notice of, or anything you'd like to clarify for us in the procedures?
No, sorry, both these procedures are just for information, and there are no changes to either one of them.
Perfect. Is there any questions? Moving right along. Item 7.1.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, just a question to Superintendent Merrick. In this procedure, have you, have you taken into account situations like what we are right now when it comes to fencing our property and making sure that we, any, any future occurrences, such as what we are in right now, are taken care of? Have you made sure?
I'm sorry, what do you are referring to, that we are in right now?
The pandemic situation, the pandemic situation where we are trying to fence off our property and not allow anybody into our properties, and we have had complaints of, of people going into our properties and playing games and stuff like that. So how do we cover that up?
Yeah, if, through Madam Chair, I mean, I think pandemics are fairly rare occurrences, and, you know, we don't necessarily account for those one-off occurrences in our, in every procedure that we have. We have been dealing with those occurrences where we have had people congregating on our sites and trying to deal with them through our security systems, through our, our building checks that we are doing three times a week still, or we're doing three times a week during the shutdown, and then now doing it through our onsite staff. So we have other manners to address any people that are intruding onto our sites as opposed to fencing them all off. We also cannot fence them off entirely, because we have fire code requirements to have a right of ways onto the site in case there's a fire on site. So we're pretty limited on what we can do as far as, you know, totally closing off access to the sites.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Moving on to item 7.1. For your information, miscellaneous, miscellaneous information. This is the policy work plan. Superintendent Ballow?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Included is the policy committee work plan. It is provided for your information. It lists all of the policies that have been considered over the course of this year, and it reflects the fulsome work that has taken place in September through this policy committee.
Thank you, Superintendent Ballow. Item eight, in camera, there is no need to move into camera. Item nine, can I get a motion to excuse trustee O'Hern Zernota?
I will.
Sorry, who was the second?
I will move. I'll second.
I can move.
Who's seconded?
Trustee Agnew moved, and I heard somebody else speak up first.
I think it was me. It's okay.
We have that on record, somebody. It doesn't matter. If you need me, I'm here.
All right, that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Trustee DeRosa?
Margaret.
Seconded by trustee Duarte. Trustee DeRosa, could you lead us in the closing prayer?
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair. I hope my microphone doesn't go off in midstream, but if everybody wants to join me in the sign of the cross, I'm going to follow the son. Heavenly Father, as we come to the end of our time together, we, we thank you for what has been accomplished here today. May the matters discussed serve as a catalyst to move us forward and cause us to advance and see growth in all areas of our lives. May we leave here recognizing you are God of all wisdom, and you are willing to lead us forward. This we pray in the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Madam Chair, I think there's a note here. Trustee Peta said we had to excuse trustee Malika.
So, yes, trustee. Okay, trustee DeRosa. Sorry, I, I, sorry, you know what, she's not on. Because normally student trustees don't always attend policy, so I do apologize. I'm not trying to.
It's okay. It was, it was a simple oversight. Let's just take care of it, then move on.
So trustee DeRosa, seconded by?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte. Anybody opposed? All right, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.